I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susie, how about the roll call?
Councilmember Groves.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzwiedel.
Here.
Councilmember Barkis.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Here. Item two, consent agenda. We have a resolution. I think everyone has seen it. I'd like to add it on your new business, number C, resolution for the closing proceeds of the Lime Shack. So I'd move to add that if I could get the support.
I'll support that.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzwiedel.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes. All right. Oh, come on then.
Perry Beecham, reside at 924 Riverside Drive, Board Chair for Lowell Light Power. Just a couple informational things. Power Fest, we're having a, it's a family event, October 17th from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Energy Center. Also, wanted the public to know, we have, while we take great pride in our status of being RP3 reliable power, we also feel it's important to help out our fellow citizens. And a call for mutual aid for Florida came out yesterday in advance of the Hurricane Milton. And we currently are sending to a crew down to assist with the potential damage in Florida. While it's, power is a very dangerous business, especially in those situations. We've had crews before in Florida. They also have to look out for the alligators and the snakes during this time. So again, just wanted to let the public know that we're very Lowell Light Power is very proud to be able to send a crew to help out in Florida.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Perry.
So many of you, the Lyman have done these rodeos where they go and compete against different power companies across the US. And what's, I've gone, Perry goes quite often. What's amazing to me is our guys, you can phone them from here and we can put them into Florida and they'll pick right up. Like, they don't even skip a beat. We can take crews from California and bring here and it'll be the exact same thing. So I've watched them all in action and I think they're extremely impressive of how they conduct themselves, so.
All right. Yes. Craig Fonger, 827 North Washington Street. First, I guess I want to echo everything Perry says about light and power. He's the Chair on the Board and Vice Chair. Hope that power is so beneficial for everybody in this community because we pay lower rates of electricity than anybody that has the large corporation that serves around us.
With better reliability.
And better reliability. So, you know, I'm just proud to be a part of the organization and how everybody just really puts 100% of their effort into it. Next, I'd like to talk about, this evening we had our first successful meeting, first meeting, and it was very successful, of the Friends of the Flat. We were going to call it Friends of the Flat River, but somebody brilliant brought up the idea that we should just make it Friends of the Flat. So we came up with the name. We now have a mission statement. Our mission statement, Lowell Flat Friends of the Flat exists to preserve and sustain the health of the Flat River ecosystem and specifically the control and/or eradication of invasive species and improve the quality of life within the city of Lowell. So tonight was just a lot of nuts and bolts stuff about, you know, getting a nonprofit up and running. We have a board. I have been chosen as President. We have Vice President Nancy Raymer. We have Treasurer Diane Smith, who back in June very passionately spoke about the issue and then a couple council meetings ago. So she is our Treasurer. And I think I've covered everyone, yes. Myself, President, Nancy Raymer, Vice President, Mayor's Secretary and Treasurer, Diane Smith. Did I, oh, because I didn't mention you yet. That's who I was missing. And there was a reason for that. Yeah, that's for last. So our mayor, Mike DeBoer, has stepped up to be the Secretary of Friends of the Flat. And he, it's an honor to have him there. So yeah, from here on out, it's kind of, we're in the process of doing the nuts and bolts of the organization. We're going to be coming up with a logo and a Facebook page and also we need to have a regular webpage too, for those who don't use Facebook. So we're off to a good start. Everybody there contributed so much. Eric, he's Barkis, Councilmember Barkis. He's been doing a lot of research on the issue. Jim Salzwiedel, Councilman Salzwiedel, opened up the showboat for us as the President of the Showboat Board and City Councilmember. We're really pleased to have him involved. And of course, I mentioned the mayor. I spoke to Marty yesterday at the opening of Creekside Kingdom, which if you haven't been over there, you should go over and see that beautiful new playground. So many put blood, sweat and tears into that in two weeks rather than the one week we wanted to, but it got done and it's just an amazing facility. And thank you, Councilperson Groves, for also being at the meeting. And I'm just so pleased that we have our city council behind this. I think there were some misperceptions on some things, but our city council, our city is committed to doing something about this. So I guess that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Marilyn Brannam at 280 Reberta Jane Drive. Speak fast to complete my topics within five minutes, so you'll have to listen fast. I have not found anything in the parking ordinance that limits extended parking on city streets except for during winter months so snowplows can clear the streets. I am here to request an amendment to the parking ordinance and I'll explain why. There's a junky van, not mine, stored in front of my house, which has been there since May 25th. Has not been moved since that date and to my knowledge hasn't even been started since that date. In my opinion, that's an unreasonably long period of time for a vehicle to be parked on the street and it causes a problem for traffic on our street. At the last special council meeting several weeks ago, that was a public hearing regarding the proposed covenant business park, three residents in attendance were complaining amongst ourselves about how difficult it is to drive down our street due to the van being stored on the street, which is approximately 29 feet wide, not including the grubs. If other vehicles are parked on the other side of the street, drivers must zigzag to maneuver around the parked vehicles. And if any of them are parked parallel to the van, drivers must try to squeeze down the middle of the street and hope no one in the parked vehicles opens a door if anyone is inside a vehicle. It's even more difficult for commercial vehicles such as delivery vehicles, garbage trucks or vehicles pulling trailers with landscaping equipment, et cetera. Additionally, where the van is currently stored, it creates a problem for two property owners to mow their lawns. A mower operator risks the mower throwing up an unseen stone or rock damaging the vehicle and/or the projectile ricocheting off the van striking and possibly injuring the mower operator. This request amendment should not affect those people who live downtown and obtain overnight parking permits for downtown parking lots because they are not residential streets. An online query response indicates that in Grand Rapids, vehicles are considered abandoned if they've been in the same place for 48 hours without being moved. And the village of Vicksburg, Michigan has a limit for vehicles and trailers of not more than two hours from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM on certain streets. So there is a precedent in Michigan for an ordinance regarding on-street parking. That query response states that parking time limits vary by location, but typically range from two hours in urban areas to 72 hours in suburban neighborhoods and that exceeding these limits can result in fines, towing or impounding of the vehicle. I would suggest a limit of 72 hours on residential streets from April 1st through October 31st to allow for guest parking during these months, not to limit overnight parking within the 72-hour timeframe. I would like to see this item placed on the agenda for discussion at the next council meeting on October 21st. Thank you for your consideration and I hope with your help we can resolve this issue.
Thank you. You have plenty of time left, Fonger.
Oh. I can talk longer.
Dennis Kent, 1700 Fayetteville, Lowell. I understand there are some issues on Reberta Jane that need to be, probably need to be dealt with, but I hope that if you are looking at parking limits that it doesn't punish other people parking on the street between April and October. There's a lot of discussion about this about 10 years ago. And, you know, I'm just, I don't object to something like a 72-hour limit or something, but I don't want to see overnight parking totally eliminated in the off-winter months. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Anybody else?
Hi, Dave Austin, 908 Lincoln Lake. In a couple of weeks, it'll be 30 years since we moved to the great city of Lowell. We had two little kids. We didn't know anything about Lowell, but when we got here, we toured around. And one of the biggest things that attracted us here were the city's parks. Creekside Kingdom had just been built at that time when we moved in. Now I have six grandkids. And I was only able to volunteer for three of the 14 days. But I came away from that experience extremely warmed and humbled. What an amazing community experience that was. Knew a lot of the people, but some of the people that I worked with, I didn't know at all. We clicked like we were a well-oiled machine, absent of politics and skill levels and income levels. And that thing came together with a lot of work. There were a lot of skilled tradespeople there, but there were just Lowell citizens there too. One of the things that I wanted the residents, everyone to go there, but the residents that aren't aware, this thing was not a cookie cutter, you know, just bolt a bunch of stuff together. Some of the modern parks are all, it comes as a kid and you just bolt them together. There were some items on there that were like big, major Ikea type of bolts. All this stuff was custom built. We had plans. We had raw lumber, although it's trucks lumber, it's plastic lumber. But people were out there measuring and cutting and adjusting, making changes cooperatively. So when you see that park out there, it wasn't just go there and bolt some things together. It was a lot of ingenuity they invested in it and like you said, a lot of sweat and tears. And for those of us who are a little older now, it was humbling physically and mentally. So I just wanted to share that with you. We're glad to be in Lowell. We're really glad we made that decision. The parks were a big part of it. My grandkids will be babysitting all the time and they'll be there a lot. But you don't, I don't think you get this, in my career, I've worked all over the state, many communities, and this is one of the best communities that I can think of that we landed at. God forbid that we have a disaster as they're experiencing down south, but if we did, something to that level, something that I experienced at Creekside Kingdom tells me that we'll be able to pull together and help each other out. Big thanks to Lowell Rotary, to the big sponsors and the small sponsors in the park. And they're not here today, but Teresa, Mark Monk and their family. Holy cow. Every day, sunup to sundown and with smiles on their face. I'm just really proud of our community.
Thanks. Thanks, Derek. Anybody else? No old business, new business, number eight, DNR Resolution for the Trails.
I'm going to have Dave come up and give you an update as to what's occurring.
Thanks. Before you, there's a resolution required by the Department of Natural Resources. Just a little backstory there. We received a grant over a year ago of $300,000 from the DNR trust fund towards the trail project. It requires that the council pass a resolution to sign a project agreement for that grant. The reason that we waited this long to recommend that you do that is the clock starts ticking on the use of their funds once you pass that resolution. And since we were working through permitting and design issues up until this point, we wanted to delay it. So those have been resolved and so we're recommending this evening that you consider that resolution. If you pass that, then the city manager will execute the project agreement and then the clock will start ticking with the DNR funds. I think we have three years actually to spend, but that was the reason. I think also in the resolution that we're required to give a breakdown of the funding and it was mentioned in your memo, we'll make a more formal announcement in a couple of weeks. But you'll see that the largest funder of the project is through MDOT's Transportation Alternatives Program. And recently, the city requested additional funding from that program to help cover some of the additional costs that are required to address the wetlands issue, wetland mitigation issues regarding the need for boardwalks and things to protect our wetlands. And MDOT graciously increased the percentage of the grant and several hundred thousand dollars. Went from 1.4 million to over $2 million for this project. So we're grateful to MDOT's Transportation Alternatives Program for that. Any questions?
Any questions, Trudy?
You think you'll make the three-year deadline to spend it? Does that matter, Dave? Is there anything happening that's...
So I'll be, soon I'll be giving the council a full update on the schedule, but given the delays that we had with the permitting and such, this will now be fiscal year '25 project, meaning we're in fiscal year '25 now, so we're hoping to take bids yet this year and then be building into '25.
Do we have no easement issues anymore? We're all done?
We need to sign the final easement, but we were waiting to sign that before we, we were waiting for these other items to fall into place before we signed that.
This evening, any accounts payable is included in the checks for that final easement.
So I sit on that committee and we've, we've broken it up somewhat because of Grand River, because of the railroad and different things. Those are still some issues that we will have to address, but that's in a completely different phase than what, the phase that we're talking about right now. So if you're looking at, you know, down the road, because our goal is to connect the trail through Lowell over to Montcom, the rails to trails and complete that. So there'll be, there's still, so we've had, we've had to divide it up into a couple of stages in order to meet our goals.
Good. Any other questions? All right, I'll look for a motion then for resolution. What is it, 20-24?
I will make that motion.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzwiedel.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Awesome. Thanks, Derek.
Thank you.
Waste Water Plant Rotor, Michael.
Previously, I briefed the city council regarding the issue with the remaining unreplaced rotor torque tube at the wastewater treatment plant. As I advise you, this is not something which can be addressed until it actually breaks down. After discussing with Brian Van der Mullen, I didn't authorize this purchase under Section 271 of the city ordinance pertaining to emergency purchases. However, I'm bringing it to you tonight. He received a quote from Lakeside Equipment Corporation, who was the original equipment manufacturer, as there is no one else who provides this part. The quoted price for the equipment is $33,546. Getting this approved will allow us to get this order, which is about an eight-week lead time. Brian is also gathering three quotes for the labor involved in installing this project. We intend to provide that information at our next meeting. I recommend to Lowell City Council to approve purchasing equipment for the unreplaced rotor torque tube at the wastewater treatment plant from Lakeside Equipment Corporation and it costs not to exceed $33,546.
Any questions?
I have one. Last time you said this was about a $41,000 project. Did that include the labor then too, Mike? When we had a...
Brian, can you answer that question better than I can?
See, that could go in, Sue.
We, it was an, well, that was one of the last time, yeah.
I do, I do have all three quotes on the labor now, but they range from just over $22,000 all the way to $66,000. So 33 plus 2, 22 is going to give you your approximate total cost.
We'll talk about that later.
That's going to get, right.
It was a very expensive, no, the answer to your question.
So really just looking for the equipment tonight so I can get that order and get that eight-week lead time rolling.
We have eight weeks left, didn't we?
Say that again.
We have eight weeks left on the other one, because we can't replace the other brakes, right?
No, this is the last.
This is the broken one, right?
No, this is the last one. Hopefully we don't go around the circle and start breaking the other ones, can't.
Look at these hard on your toys, do you have any session?
With that, then I'm making a purchase of the water plant rotor.
I will support that.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Salzwiedel.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes. All right, number C is the resolution that we were presenting tonight. Long story short, we finally closed on the Lime Shack Friday and the paperwork was delivered to Sun Title. It was supposed to be, keys were supposed to be turned over today, although I don't know if that happened, but they'll be turned over tomorrow for repeat discussions between myself and Perry and Charlie and Mike. The consensus was that the money belongs to the repairs of Lowell Light Power as they were funding the maintenance and upkeep of that building for all these years, so this resolution just speaks to that. So if there's not any questions or concerns, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2124, transmitting the proceeds from the sale of property to Lowell Light Power.
And I'll support.
I will second.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzwiedel.
Yes.
7:26 PM, we're done with the Lime Shack.
Thank you.
October 7th.
Yeah, don't, that's the part time for, just the part where we're done.
Ford and Commission report, Eric.
Historic Ford had two approvals. Los Portales is investing in a plastic sunroom around their balconies so that provides more three-season heating in their establishment. That was approved. And Mark Bachelor had, was approved to put in all-new windows in two of his buildings above the North Country Trail in sweet seasons. So he has apartments there. He's investing in quality windows for all of that, so that was approved.
Cool. Anything else? Jim?
Lowell Light Power got a beautiful new bucket truck about 14 months ahead of schedule. It was huge. Apparently some community bailed on it and so we moved up on the list. I get it. Lowell Light Power is doing some additional work. It's 95% completed and ready for them to go. So when you see it out there, it's going to be a hands-on, oh, it's a beautiful truck. So looking forward to seeing that on the road there.
Is that like one of the, like the other new truck that's more like a hybrid?
No, it's a diesel. It's all diesel.
It's to replace our large bucket truck.
Green, the green one.
And it was, the green one, it will be going up for sale. And the, no, this truck has, it amazes me, this truck has been on order for two years. We were not expected to get it till 2026. It's amazing that these things take that long.
Yeah, and it's going to get them higher too. I think it's a 50 footer, if not more. As far as that room to extend it, it's really a cool truck, so if you get a chance to see it, you'll probably see it on the road, but it's a beast.
Power Fest, the 17th, you'll be able to see it.
Oh, that, that'll be up on, coming back on the council conference. It'll be on my council conference.
I know we can't, but can we drop at least one pumpkin coming?
That's it.
Good. RG?
I have none so far.
All right, my turn next week.
I've covered the Friends of the Flat River. That was the only one I've had so far this month. Mike, city managers report.
A couple of items. Just a reminder, Lou Vander will be here at the fire station next Monday at 5:00 PM. And then also, we were going to bring you the traffic officer results to this meeting. They didn't have all their information prepared, so it'll be at the next meeting. The police chief search is continuing. We had work, we had met with representatives from the Assessment Center last week and I am now starting the process of scheduling that piece. And then the public hearing questions from the September 18th meeting were online, but for some reason, once, if they were online, when we refreshed the website, which I'll talk about in a second, they were up and now they're not there, so I got to get them back up. We met last week, myself and Bill Thompson, Travis Alton from the Replacement, with representatives from the MBC. We're trying to get more funds for the infrastructure and we'll just say that they were, they were not dismissive. And it's, you know, basically job creation will be what MBC is looking for and they'll get back to us. We did refresh the website on Thursday. It's been something I've been working on for about a year. One of the things that will eventually get on there, which we're working on, is online forums. We have, we've been putting together some of the forums. It's been a very slow process. I'm the one who has to do it. That's when I have time to make the forums. So we're working on that. The, two weeks ago, there was a, we had put a sign at the pedestrian crosswalks by Lowell School on Foreman. And it was, I was not aware of the signs were being there and I was driving down Foreman one day and the signs say "State law, yield to pedestrians." The problem is, there is no state law that lets you yield to pedestrians at midsection crossings. That street is not, that crossing is not in an intersection and under Michigan law, we cannot do that. The reason I know that is because when Diane and I were in our former community, we got into a big argument about it and I was wrong. Yes.
Is there like a plaque or something in there?
Yeah.
That's at 7:30.
October 7th.
I was wrong. So I, so I had to have it taken down, but we are going to hopefully bring it back in order next meeting for that. And then the Oxford study, we did, we are starting it this week. They mobilized that Friday, and I didn't hear if they were out there today, but I know they're going to be early this week, and that's all I have.
Questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Appointments is pretty easy. We have one vacancy on DDA for any local business owner that's interested in coming to DDA, or anybody with a vested interest in the community that would like to be on DDA. Really, really fun meetings, actually. Eric, how about some council appointments?
Again, I echo Dave's comments about Creekside Park. That was just a wonderful experience, and I was able to help out a little, and it was just incredible to see the community coming together and putting in tremendous amount of hours. Some people were there every day, and I'm just impressed.
Did you try out the slide?
No, but I tried the climbing wall.
Tried and true, attest it. Jim?
Just want to tell you about Power Fest coming October 17th. Not only will they be there for this, but on October Saturday, they'll also be hosting a pumpkin decorating on the Lowell showboat. It will be done with stickers and no paint. It was one of the things that we said, there'll be no paint on the boat, so they'll be doing these pumpkins with stickers, so I want to thank Lowell Light Power for putting on it as well this coming weekend. I tried to work at the Creekside Park, but unfortunately, my blood pressure dropped. I was a statistic on the police report or the paramedic report that day. They had to come and cheer me a little bit, and we eventually got my blood pressure raised up. I couldn't do a lot of physical stuff, but I tried to get there and support them morally the best I could when I could get there on that part of it, so I am amazed how it turned out. Interesting fact about the wood chips, that will, that will be able to stand a concussion, a concussion, if you are up eight foot and drop on your head, that's what that special stuff is.
Waste.
Yeah, it is. So it's kind of amazing why it's so thick, and the safety that has to go through now with a, with a park, and you have to follow these playgrounds. So I'd say it was pretty cool, so that's all I got.
Our G.
Really, all I have is to go, just admiring the time and energy and capacity it takes for people to come together and to build a park in our community, and it is a big deal. And I am very grateful.
Well, this is old enough to build a boat with them. Aren't they, Marty? Go ahead.
Yes. Actually, there's several people I want to really take time to thank. The Doyle family, Brian, Jim, they showed up. We shovelled gravel together for hours, and Patrick, Brian's son showed up, and his wife, and they ran rakes for hours. And if you were part of the gravel detail, oh, good Lord, it didn't seem like that big pile was ever going to shrink. King Millen donated a lot of money, and for them to be there as often as they were, and it was fun to work with Brian side by side, is truly amazing if you think about it. They didn't need to do that, they could just write a big check and say, there you go. But they wanted to be part of our community. The other person, two people I'd like to thank, is Teresa Mont and my son Cody. Cody was five years old when the first one was built, and he was there helping, I think. I'm sure at five, he was probably screwing around somewhere, but his older brother, Christopher, was also there. So for my son to take charge and help take lead on this, it's pretty, pretty amazing when your, when your children want to make your community better too. So with that being said...
Very good. Yeah, I was going to echo the sentiments. Dave brought forth her in public comment, especially to Cody and Teresa. I did see, also, I walked the perimeter looking at the tickets, and I saw a bunch of, bunch of names, so I thought that was super cool. The whole thing turned out really well, it was well-attended, good weather. So I'm grateful that a project like that came together. I'm sure it wasn't, but optically, it looked very easy and seamless and quick-moving, so I'm sure behind the scenes it was different. Also to Diane and Craig for putting together the Friends of the River. Looks like it's going to be a good amount of work, but worth it as well. So that's two pretty good examples of people wanting something done and taking it upon themselves to do it. So happens here a lot. With that, I'll look forward to the motion to go into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by standard federal statute, MCL 15268-1.
I'll support it.
Okay. Motion in a second to go into closed session.
Mayor Rocco.
Yep.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeHore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzwiedel.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkus.
Yes.
Okay. The folks.